Just a reminder to everyone, this call is being recorded. Welcome to tonight's meeting. On the phone right now, from what I can see, for Board of Ed members, we have Mr. Mark Doyle, we have Ms. Paula Haney, Ms. Lynn Ied. I believe that is Ms. Lambert's number, Ms. Lisa Dunick, Ms. Ilda Rae, Ms. Dr. Mary Galucci, and we also have Dr. Tracy Youngberg, Ms. Suzanne Craw. Sorry, it's been a long day. Ms. Testa is on the line, Mr. Robinson Camacho, and Ms. Margaret Chady, as well as myself, Mr. Brendan O'Neill. Is there anyone I missed in roll call there?
Rita. Ms. Rita.
Yeah. And Miguel, Miguel's here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, my screen just refreshed with a whole bunch more numbers.
Neil Weathers is here, too.
Okay, so it sounds like we certainly have a forum. Is there any other board member? I think Katina just came on, right?
I do not see anything with her name, but I do have like 12 wireless callers.
Okay, okay. And I didn't know whether any Gomez is on.
I do not see him either.
Okay, okay. Well, since we have a forum, let's get started. And the first order-
Lynn?
How come I can't hear her?
Can you hear my microphone?
Can't hear you, Lynn.
Can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
A little better, but-
A little better, but not real clear. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna hold the phone rather than have it on speaker. The first order of business today is a public comment, and I don't know how you want to handle that, Brendan. Is there anybody who would like to speak under public comment? And I would ask that you have to please identify yourself clearly and try to keep your comments to, you know, no longer than a couple of minutes. Who would like to go under public comment? Anybody? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to reports from the superintendent on the status of things under COVID-19 and the budget approval process. Those are the two things that we're gonna cover there. So, and of course, we can, the board will be able to ask Dr. Youngberg questions after she gives her report. So, I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Youngberg.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Such a strange way to conduct a meeting, but, okay, so today is day one of schooling at home, and I asked all the schools to send me an update of how things were going, and I got so much information, I'm afraid it would take me 45 minutes to walk through all that they shared with me. I'm gonna just highlight a few things to let you know what happened today, and then I'm gonna send you all of their highlights tomorrow or tonight through email, so you can read through them, because they really did do an amazing job of trying to update me. So, basically, we are, today was the first day for the students that have digital access to be able to have virtual access to their teachers and certified staff members, and we're in varying degrees across the district of who's able to do that. We focused our Chromebook rollout, starting with the high school and middle school first, and we're working our way backwards as we determine how many Chromebooks we actually have available. At this point, we've handed out approximately 800 Chromebooks between the high school, middle school, and Barrows, Barrows Middle School grades. We are doing a rollout to grades three to five on Thursday and Friday. The high school seems to be the furthest along in terms of their ability to offer virtual supports to students today. Like I said, it was day one, but they accomplished a great deal in day one in terms of connecting with students and running some virtual classrooms and virtual or Google Hangouts. So, I'm excited to start making some copies, some video recordings of some of these things that are going on, so I can show you in real time what's happening. I can tell you from Food Services Department, we have something to celebrate. Today, they served 1,990 meals, so almost 2,000 meals today alone, which is like impressive all by itself.
Great.
Yeah, it's fantastic. I have to just do a, like a formal shout-out to every single one of my staff members. They really have pulled together, whether they're working from home or actually still coming into the office. They are definitely living up to the whole idea of teamwork and using their individual strengths and talents to get things done. We have a, it's a really unusual setup, and I know everybody's experiencing that if you're still going to work or still trying to get work done. It's very strange to be trying to keep the district running and not having people in front of you while you're doing it, or having them through text messages or a phone call and occasionally a video chat, because we've been working in some leadership meetings through Zoom. But I just have to say thank you to all of my team members, and I think my entire cabinet plus some are on this call. It has really been amazing to watch the team function, and I'm just really proud of the work that everybody's doing, and straight down from central office down to each building and through all the departments as well, Food Services, HR, Finance, Custodial, and Maintenance, everyone is just, you know, going above and beyond to try to get the job done. I don't know if the board members have specific questions. It might be easier to do that, to get you specific answers than to just go through big picture.
Yeah. So, we'll- Dr. Youngberg, please identify yourself when you ask the question. Thank you.
Dr. Youngberg, it's Tracy Lambert.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Paula.
Neighbor had a question about whether second grade, first grade would be getting any Chromebooks, that they're expected to do virtual learning.
So, right now, we have not identified K to two as being grades that would get Chromebooks, but that's not to say that isn't going to happen after we finish the grades three to five rollout. We had to, we have to set up the older kids first to make sure that they're able to meet whatever the credit attainment requirements that are supposed to be coming from the state in the next couple of weeks are, and we worked our, we're working our way backwards from there. So, it is possible we'll have enough to give out to K to two students, but right now, they're not the group, they're not a group that we've identified as getting them, not yet, anyway.
But they would have, they would have virtual learning if they had their own equipment.
Well, that's correct. Everything we've rolled out so far has come in the form of, we've given recommendations as to what they can log into if they have a digital device, and we've given the work in paper form if they don't. So, they have both options always, and if your neighbor received their packet with their report card, they should have received paper copies of skills review packets from, that are supported by our online program iReady, and in the packet is actually a recommendation of how much they can use the digital supports at home if they have access to it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Youngberg, Lisa Dunick.
Hi, Lisa.
Where are we, hi, where are we getting the Chromebooks from to send home with the kids that are getting them?
So, these are the Chromebooks that we have in our own inventory that have been purchased from, you know, a variety of funding sources, but these are the ones that the district owns, I know, and that creates a whole nother situation, because we will have to collect them all and hope that they're still working when we need to use them when school's back in session. But these are ours that we're handing out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Youngberg, Tracy Lambert.
Hello, how are you?
Good. I'm wondering if we, through virtual learning, whatever, have any way to know if there are students not being reached?
We're trying to figure that out little by little. I guess we'll be able to figure out who logs on. If they have access to a device, we'll be able to track them that way, but it's gonna take us a little while. You're absolutely right, it's not the easiest thing to do, and it's not like taking attendance of kids sitting in front of you. So, I know, for example, our pre-K to five teachers will know right away, because they're all reaching out to their students to conduct their virtual parent-teacher conferences this week, so they should have numbers for us about who still needs access, who doesn't have access, all those kinds of things, who has internet at home and no device, who has a device and maybe no working internet, whatever those situations are. But the grades six through 12, we're going family by family to try to figure it out. It's not easy.
Okay. I was just curious to see, you know, what percentage of our students are actually either paper or online accessing academics versus how many are just falling through the cracks, because often, those are kids that may need the services the most, so.
I completely agree with you. I know from looking at the numbers of Chromebooks that have been rolled out, it looks like the high schools rolled out a little more than 340 Chromebooks, and they have about 600 students, so that's about 57%. Middle schools rolled out a little more than 64, and they have 655 students, so that's about 55% of the population. And Barrows Middle Grades have rolled out about 16% of their enrolled students. So, it is gonna take us some time to figure out who's using their own devices. We'll know, though, in the next few days, we'll know who's actually accessing the digital resources, at least from grades six through 12, we'll be able to tell you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Tracy. This is Jaime.
Hey, Dr. Gomez.
Hey, Dr. Youngberg. I have a question.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Okay, my question is sort of a follow-up from a question that this is Lambert, but wouldn't teachers know who logs in and who doesn't? Isn't the whole purpose of having the Chromebooks out that the students can be in touch with their teachers? Or am I wrong?
No, I can, I'll venture to guess that the teachers in grades six through 12 who are doing the virtual connections today could tell you who they checked in with and who they didn't. But now, the next question is, well, did the other students who they didn't check in with, is it because they don't have access, or did they just not get online when they were supposed to be online? So, it's gonna take us a little bit of time to get all that information.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, absolutely. If they have devices and we're offering virtual supports, we should eventually know who's accessing those supports.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, one more. Are we, are we thinking about using this to our, hello?
Hello?
I'm here.
Can you hear me still? Okay.
Yep.
Are we thinking about using this to our advantage for the future at some point, to continue it if it is successful?
I'm a little confused by the question. You mean having support virtually when school's in session?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, like, you're, I guess you're talking about homework specifically.
Right. Homework or extra services if they're needed. I mean, I know it's soon, and we're doing it because we need to, but if it is successful, if it's something, an option that we could continue if it is successful?
Well, I can't see why it couldn't be used as a resource to supplement what we're doing on a regular school day. Obviously, I think it benefits all students if we're incorporating as much technology as possible into their, into their everyday learning experience, because that's the direction the world is headed in. Our issue is, we know there's a percentage of kids that do not have internet access at home, and we haven't actually figured out how to get them internet access, aside from strongly encouraging them to sign up for the free home installation. We don't have answers for a number of our students about how we're gonna get them internet, so it does create an equity issue for some of our students. We can only strongly encourage them to sign up for the free internet, we can't force them to do that. So, I have, I have, I get kinda sick to my stomach when I think about that, because if the percentage is as large as I think it is from some of our initial survey data, it's gonna be really difficult to get, to continue to support them digital, you know, in this way if we're closed down for an extended period of time, because they're gonna keep, we're gonna keep having to give them paper copies of things that everybody else is accessing digitally.
Right.
But yeah, anytime we can add digital access, you know, any kind of technology, I think it's good for kids, because that's what their, that's what their jobs are gonna be like. Well, you know, the whole world is gonna be like that soon.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. This is Ilda. How are you?
Hi, Ilda.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm okay, hanging in there. So, I have a couple of questions. One is grading. So, now, how will they be able to keep track of grades? I mean, like, let's just say, because according to Governor Lamont, schools will be closed until at least April 20th. So, if that's the case, how, how will the teachers be able to do the grade, the grading for the students?
So, the State Department of Ed has not given us, they told us that they're gonna wait till, they think they'll have the answers by mid-April in terms of how they want grading for, in terms of high school credits to be handled. So, we don't have any answers to that just yet, but they should be coming in the next couple of weeks. What I've shared with my principals about grading is, we, they need to encourage the students to get, to do the very best they can on the work that's provided, whether that's work that they're accessing digitally or in paper form. We have to be aware of the fact that we can't control what's happening inside the students' homes, that school closures creates a whole nother layer of equity issues, because not only do we have the potential issues of some students not having digital access, they might not have access to a grown-up in their, in their house. Perhaps they're, they're in the healthcare field and they're, they're working extra shifts and aren't home with the kids to help them with their schoolwork. There could be other issues. Maybe that the adults in the home are not comfortable supporting them in terms of their academic work. Maybe there's not a quiet place where they can sit and do the work. I mean, there's a number of variables we can't control when the work's being done at home, so I've told the principals and my department leaders to think about encouraging kids to do the best they can on the work they can do, not to lower their expectations, but to be understanding that there are factors we can't control. They need to be fair and compassionate in their grading and provide feedback that tells kids what they're doing well and how they can be flexible.
Okay. I have another question. I'm sorry, one more quick question, and mine, of course, is about graduation. So, let's just say, school is out for the rest of the year. So, what are we gonna do about graduation? Has anyone talked about it, like a big what-if?
No, we're still waiting for some direction about how long the school's gonna be out. Obviously, we all know how important commencement ceremony is to our high, to our high school seniors, and we're gonna do everything in our power to figure out how to celebrate. It's a milestone in their life, and no one wants them to miss it, and no one wants their families to miss it. So, we're gonna do everything in our power to figure out how to celebrate that, but we won't know what we have to do until we hear how long school is going to be closed for. And, I mean, if they get us back, you know, in, in May, for example, we'll have plenty of time to figure all that out. But if they tell us we're out longer than that, then that's a different story. So, we've kinda been waiting, you know, they, the president just alluded to the social distancing being in place till the end of April now, which tells me we won't be going back to school until beyond that date, but I have not gotten any words specifically from the commissioner or the governor.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Katina. In terms of, in terms of the grading, UConn is doing pass/fail, and I was wondering if the Department of Education would consider that for, you know, for, to get credit for at least the seniors or part of the population or all of it, you know, so if the kid did the effort, that wasn't, you know, handed the packet, you know, it might be easier than judging fail, you know, or Cs or Ds, which takes an unbelievable amount of, I don't know, there are too many factors, like you well said.
Yeah, I know that the pass/fail has been something, it's been a discussion point, but nothing has been decided yet, and the commissioner has told us he hopes to have a formal grading process in place for all Connecticut schools by mid-April, so we're just waiting.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, are there any more questions on this before we move on to the next item?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Youngberg. So, the next item is budget approval. As everybody knows by now, one of the governor's executive orders suspended the need for referendum approval for budgets, and we are moving forward in a new world that none of us have ever been through before, which is figuring out how to approve a budget and make the case for our budget without having public hearings or, or other ability to have public forums or be out at public events. So, we are having our first session with the Board of Finance on Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM via Zoom, which is, for those of you who haven't experienced Zoom, it's a video conferencing platform, and I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Youngberg to explain what's happening with that.
Brendan, you might be able to help me on the, on the Zoom meeting we're gonna be using.
Sure. Absolutely. So, the Board of Ed members have received invitation, as well as the Board of Finance members, to a Zoom meeting that will be, I'll be moderating on Wednesday to help both boards out. You know, during this time, Dr. Youngberg will be able to give her normal presentation to the Board of Finance, ask questions and answers, and, you know, there'll be, there is the opportunity for the public to watch. I don't know offhand if the Board of Finance is going to entertain public comment or any questions from the public, but the, you know, the platform does allow for that if they choose to. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Youngberg.
Good, thank you, Brendan.
And this is Lynn. This is Lynn. I would, I would assume, just so, has anybody on the board not been on a Zoom conference call?
I have.
No, has anybody not been on one? Okay, so pretty much everybody knows how they work. You know, one of the reasons that we pushed for this rather than a phone meeting was so that Dr. Youngberg would be able to present the slide deck during the Zoom conference call, conference, video conference, which allows everybody to see a presentation rather than just hear a presentation. And I think that's a very important feature of the call, and of course, we are encouraging as many board members as possible to be on the video conference so that you can see what's happening. If, I'm assuming it will be recorded if everybody approves it being recorded.
Do you believe that's the plan?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Dr. Youngberg.
So, no, I mean, what you both have said is exactly what I would've said. I'm going to be, I'm going to share my PowerPoint presentation and walk the Board of Finance through the presentation, and everyone should be able to see the slides as if I were standing in front of you and giving a presentation at a regular board meeting. And the forum should be set up so that people can ask questions if there's a piece of a slide that they, you know, are wondering about, and it's some kind of interactive dialogue between myself and the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed.
But let's remember, this is the Board of Finance's meeting, so Tyler will be the leader in the meeting as far as how he wants to, you know, run the meeting. I'm assuming he will defer to the Board of Finance members first to ask questions, rather than open it up to everybody.
Sure, that makes sense. Okay.
And Margaret Chady, I know, is, is, you know, we've been encouraging people to send emails to the Board of Finance, correct, if they want to weigh in on the budget?
Yeah. Go ahead, Margaret.
Yeah, Margaret here. We have encouraged the principals to reach out to their staff members, as well as their SGCs, to notify them about how all of this will work. We've also put this out on our own website, as well as our own Facebook page, communicate to people, and we are beginning to get some testimony that is being forwarded to us. There may be some that's also being sent directly to the Board of Finance that we may not be aware of, but we're hoping that people will CC us so that we can see the testimony that's going to the Board of Finance.
May I interrupt? This is Katina. Yes, I'm in the process of writing my testimony, and I know I am to send it to the Chair of the Board of Finance and to you, Margaret. I would appreciate if I have all the names of the, of the Board of Finance members in their, or their emails so that I can include them. So, I'm sending this to all of them simultaneously.
We can certainly provide that.
Katina, is it right on the town website?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. It's right on the town website.
Oh, it's right on the town's website, yeah. Well, thank you. I will find it.
Is there anybody who has any questions, suggestions about getting the budget out to the public? You know, we've posted it, you know, some of the previous suggestions about having it available in the libraries and things like that are not an option anymore, but anybody have any thoughts or suggestions on that?
Does the school system have the emails of families that can be sent out as an attachment altogether?
You mean like a, like the way we message them?
Yes, like the way you, yeah, message and say, this is the budget, please, you know, speak up.
I believe that's on our, our plan for tomorrow, to send out an alert call, you know, reminding everyone again, knowing that the principals reached out to families this weekend, or our intention was that they were going to do the first round and that we would do a follow-up alert call tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
I wondered if any of the board members had any questions that they anticipated that the Board of Finance might be asking on Wednesday? If you wanted to share any insights you thought I might be prepared, you know, might need to know to be prepared to answer.
Hi, this is Katina again. I think the, well, number one, of course, there will be members that think 9.78%, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hello? Okay, I thought I lost you. First, some of the members are gonna say, you know, this is outlandish, so addressing that right on would be good, but the second thing is, since the governor has, you know, said not to have any referendums, they're, I'm afraid that they're gonna say, oh, how can we make these decisions without people, and how is that going to affect us politically? So, and it would be like, oh, we've knocked this one through. So, I would, I would think about how to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments about the budget before we move on?
Tracy Lambert, may I say something?
Yes.
Dr. Youngberg, you may wanna have some kind of idea on what cuts mean, you know, a 1%, a 6% cut from the 9.7%, you know, what, what may have to go if cuts are made, just to give them an idea. They ask that every single year. Well, if we cut $100,000, if we cut $300,000, what does that mean? What positions go? And like we've been learning from the teachers and the people in the buildings, you know, things that aren't being filled and services that might not be able to get to the kids, like gifted and talented and other things like that.
Sure.
Just have some idea of, you know, things that might have to get cut, things that we talked about on that page for the, the budget cut at the 3% or 6% or whatever it was that we said, no, we wanna fully fund it, now let the Board of Finance make their decisions, you know, those things that are, you're gonna have to prioritize the first and second to go, so that way they see what the impact they have on the students.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may add, this is Jaime.
Go ahead, Jaime.
If I may add, you can point out that we have come to this, to this point because of the, you know, for years and years, the district has been- uh, because of the, you know, for years and years, the, the district has been neglected to attain all the needs they have. And it has come to a point where we can no longer continue that. And I think that is based on the needs that we have.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, hearing, I mean, obviously, people can get in touch with Dr. Youngberg with any suggestions or thoughts, um, before Wednesday evening, um, or me. And, uh, we'll be, we'll, we'll, we'll be on the, the Zoom conference call and, uh, I mean, video conference, and we'll see where it goes from there, okay?
Okay.
Um, the next item on the agenda is discussion of transportation contracts. There have been a lot of questions raised about how we should be dealing with this. Um, and I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Youngberg to give an overview. We've been getting a lot of advice, um, and a lot of information, and it's sort of an evolving, um, story. But, uh, let's, let's get the overview from you, Dr. Youngberg.
Sure, so, uh, as I shared with the board, um, at our last meeting, I think it was our last meeting, all the days have blended together at this point. Um, but we were originally asked by M&amp;J Bus Company to continue to pay our, um, daily bus, sort of the daily rate that we pay to keep transportation services, um, moving, even though our contract didn't specifically say we were required to do that. Um, and originally, the way it was presented to me was if we paid them this daily rate or some amount close to the daily rate, we could maintain the bus drivers. They wouldn't lay them off, and we would not have to worry about, um, the services being impacted when we went back to school. Well, come to find out, they already laid off the bus drivers. Um, they were laid off the very first day that the schools were closed. Um, and so, I wasn't happy to find that out, because that's not the way it was explained to me. But what, in the meantime, there was a number of things happening sort of behind the scenes in, uh, with the attorneys involved in transportation contracts across the entire state. And, um, the superintendents were concerned that the Governor was going to actually make a decision that forced all school systems to pay their transportation contracts, whether or not they had clauses that spoke to paying bills when transportation services weren't provided. Um, but in the meantime, the new stimulus package that's coming from the federal government basically has a clause in it that our attorneys have said for us not to do anything, that they're going to get back to us with the information. But the clause would stop us from receiving supports or if we don't pay the, the bus contract. So, we obviously still have a number of questions to ask, but the last bit of advice from Tom Mooney on Friday was for us just to wait till they completely understand what the details in the stimulus package mean, um, and then they'll let us know what it is we're supposed to do about paying the bus contract.
Ah.
I don't know if I explained that at all, because it's very, it's very complicated. But I know that I'm going to take, we should take the attorney's advice not to do anything yet until we hear back from them.
So, that's why we have it on the agenda for discussion, um, only. Uh, does anybody have anything they want to raise right now about this?
This is Ilda. I say we just wait and see what the, what, um, Tom Mooney tells us.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
Who said that?
Ilda.
Was that you? Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? I thought I heard another person try to chime in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. That's all we can do. That's okay.
I can assure you, it's been very confusing for, for the superintendent and staff to try to figure out, um, there've been lots of, there's been lots of counsel from the state and from our attorneys, and I think we just need to hold tight, no matter how pleasant it is to hear that, um, the bus drivers were laid off immediately, pretty much.
Yeah, that's not cool.
Okay, well, hearing nobody else chiming in on that, um, the last item on the agenda is, um, just a, and a formal, a formal action. Uh, last week, when the superintendent was work and, and HR were working on the memorandum of understanding or agreement, I can't remember whether it was MOA or MOU in this case.
MOA, yes.
MOA with the, um, with the different bargaining units around the changes in, in, uh, work conditions that relate to teaching remotely, um, the schools being closed, and the changes in expectations for, um, different parts of our staff. Uh, I did a canvas, a one-on-one canvas with everybody on the board, and, um, to a person, it was unanimous that we, uh, that we continue to pay our employees , uh, through the end of the school year, uh, regardless of how long during that period we are closed. Um, but I would like to, I entertain a motion and would like a second and would like, uh, to take a formal vote, so we have it on, on record.
All right, this is Tracy Lambert. I make a motion to pay all staff through the end of the school year according to the MOAs, um, irregardless of return to school or not.
I second it. Lisa Dunick.
The motion is seconded by Tracy.
I cannot hear. What?
Lisa Dunick, I second it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, the motion is been made by Tracy Youngberg and seconded by Lisa Dunick. Is there any discussion?
No, no, it was made by Tracy Lambert, made by Tracy Lambert.
I mean, Tracy, Tracy Lambert, I'm sorry, Tracy, sorry, by Tracy Lambert, seconded by Lisa Dunick. Is there any discussion?
No.
I, I would just say that the money's in the budget. This is Tracy Lambert again. The money's in the budget. It's not going to cost us anything additional. I want to clear that up for anybody who might be listening at home and clear that we're not allocating additional funds or anything like that. These are monies that are in our budget.
Is there anybody else?
My comment, okay, somebody else is, this is Katina. My comment is that this is the only decent thing to do. It helps our local economy, and, uh, people need to be paid and supported through this, um, crisis.
And the majority of the staff are working.
Yes. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor? Can you get your thing high?
Aye.
Um, just a point of order. I think we have to do a roll call vote on a phone.
I think so.
Okay, okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Mary Galucci.
Aye.
Uh, Paula Haney.
Aye.
Katina Caban-Oles.
Aye.
Mark Doyle.
Aye.
Tracy Lambert.
Aye.
Jaime Gomez.
Aye.
Lisa Dunick.
Aye.
Ilda Ray.
Aye.
And I'd, aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for making sure we did it correctly, Brendan. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And then the final item on the agenda is public comment. Again, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, if you want to speak during public comment, you need to please identify yourself clearly. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, I would just like to wrap up then as Chair, um, just thanking the board and the superintendent and all the staff of the school system for everything that everybody is doing to make this work under very difficult circumstances. And, uh, I think, um, everybody is appreciative of, of everything that is being done, and, um, we're going to do our best to stay in contact, um, throughout all of this. And, you know, it may result in us having more regular special board meetings , um, as new information comes about or we do need to take action. But thank you so much, Dr. Youngberg, for your leadership and for everybody else who's working very hard, um, to make this work. It's amazing that we served so many meals and have, um, connected with so many kids already.
I echo that.
You're here. Agreed.
Yeah, me too. I agree. Ilda Ray, I agree.
We appreciate that feedback. They're working hard for sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. This, this is Katina. I had a grandmother, uh, said to me, um, I feel secured that my children are safe. Thank you to that new superintendent.
Oh, thank you.
I'm just repeating what I, this woman told me the other day as I was in line waiting for the prom, uh, book for my daughter.
That's very sweet.
Yep.
Extremely important.
Lynn?
Yes?
Lynn, I'm sorry. This is Joanne Haddad. I think I missed public comment on the end.
Oh, okay. Would you like to, before we close, Joanne Haddad, is there something you'd like to say under public comment?
I apologize. Um, I, I just wanted to quickly say regarding the Board of Finance meeting on Wednesday, um, you know, I know that if people do want to join, they're going to need to get the, uh, ID and/or password if it's needed. Um, and so, the sooner we can get that out, number one, the better. And number two, I really think it's vital, and I, I mean, I do hope that they won't just take what people send in and read them privately before even having the meeting. I hope people have an opportunity to say what they want to say in their own voice, because I think it, it can really make a difference between reading it on paper. Uh, and I plan on sending in my testimonial, so to speak. Um, but I, I just think it's really vital that we could read them ourselves if possible. And I think there are going to be other people that feel the same way, and there are going to be other people that are going to be glad that they don't have to read theirs. But I just wanted to throw that in, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment before we close? Okay, hearing nothing, um, we'll be adjourning the meeting at 7:12. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Brendan?
Good night.
Yep.